All right, council. Now we're up to our last item before we go into a closed session. It is a resolution declaring a state of emergency due to insufficient intensive care unit beds. And medical personnel in the city and county of Fresno. It's requesting relief and additional support from the governor. And in addition to that, it is making it clear that the city maintains its ability to enforce. Rules related to mass gatherings. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Chavez on this item. And then we'll go to the public and come back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, thank you. Just to kind of summarize this. Item. The previous conversations that we've had, there's been obviously an interest in ensuring that we have, you know, some kind of proactive. Measures for ensuring that our, our, our community is staying safe, they're staying healthy. I think what this does is it codifies the conversations that the council has been having from the beginning to more recently. Where we're, we're now asking Governor Newsom to provide us with a couple of things. One. Being more relieved for adding and expanding the ICU bed capacity. Two, at, at the urging of Councilmember Soria, two was additional vaccines. For essential workers, which we know are the ones keeping food on the table. And that's important to keep in mind as we just went through Thanksgiving and we're about to go to through Christmas. These are the folks that are putting those. Fruits and vegetables and dairy products and meat products on our table. So it's important to keep that in mind as we're working with the governor's office to. Securing more vaccines here. But then the third one was, you know, just letting the community know that we want them to be responsible. We want them to exercise personal responsibility along with their rights that they have. I don't think anybody is. You know, reducing or diminishing that. We want them to be safe. And I've always said that. You know, City Hall or the state can make a hundred different laws, but if people's behavior doesn't change, we're going to end up right in a situation where. Unfortunately, a lot of other jurisdictions are where you have hallways that are now packed here locally with COVID patients. I was just informed yesterday that they are now turning away folks that are unfortunately terminally ill and not providing. Them with the equipment that they need and sending them to either hospice or, or back home. And that's a sad narrative to have here because I think the purpose. Of every action that the council has taken was to not overwhelm the medical system here locally. That's always been at the forefront of the decisions that I have made, very tough decisions. I think everybody. Our colleagues included are now at the point where we're fatigued, we're annoyed, we're angry. And quite frankly, you know, sick and tired of this pandemic I am. I don't like wearing a mask. I don't like using hand sanitizer. But I do it not because I'm naive enough to think that it's going to eliminate COVID, but it sure as heck helps in reducing it. And that's really the goal here. We're about to enter a very critical time period for our city. Where the last thing as the elected official that I want to see is an overwhelmed medical system here locally. And so with that, you know, we, we want, obviously want to reserve the right to levy fines on those that are being egregiously irresponsible. And by that, let me be very specific so people don't interpret and interject their own definition. People that are having backyard concerts. Inviting fifty five zero or more people, charging ten dollars. I've had in my district over ten calls. In these past two weekends, the folks that are doing that. Sadly, we know that ten percent based on our local data. That Dr. Vora and, and Doc and Dave Palmerville have told us, ten percent. Of COVID infections are going to ultimately end up in our emergency room or hospitals. Just yesterday, we had four hundred and seventy-five new cases. That's on top of the daily average that we've been having of three hundred and seventy-six. So that number is very sobering for me. I don't think there's anybody in the city of Fresno now that. Doesn't know or, or at least knows of that have been affected by COVID, which is across the spectrum. Whether you got mildly sick, really sick, or unfortunately passed away. That's a very scary thought. To have in our community. And so I just want the public to understand that everything that drives our actions. Is to try to keep people safe and healthy. By no means do we think we have all the answers to know everything. We're just going off of what our medical experts are saying, our local data is showing, and more importantly, what we're hearing. From our local hospitals, our local clinics, our local service providers. These numbers are real. And, and, and I want our residents to understand that these decisions are not easy. We do them very cautiously. And we just want to make sure that folks are being responsible and not, you know, providing conditions. Where we can potentially have super spreader events. I think it's not too much to ask. We're about to enter a very critical time, like I said, but there is light at the end of the tunnel. We do have a vaccine coming. We do have multiple treatment plans that are now operational, but we want to make sure that. We don't, like we said in the beginning, we don't overwhelm our medical system. And right now, from what the local medical folks are telling us, we're at critical mass and we're at a tipping point. And so that's a very simple proposition that I want to make to our residents. You have the power right now. To either decide to be responsible and minimize this or to be irresponsible. And contribute to the increased numbers. I hope and I have faith that. And I know that the majority of people are out there doing the right thing, but for that small percentage, we just ask that you think of others and not yourself. We all have constitutional rights. Nobody denies that, but along with those rights come responsibilities. And I think this is a time when we can exercise both of those. And, and so with that, I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Council President.
Go ahead, Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Chavez. I think that you summed up pretty well what this resolution is trying to do. It is our intent that we urge the governor and our state leaders to really see. To provide additional investments from the state to our local. Healthcare system. This morning or earlier this afternoon, I received an email. I've been in conversations with community medical center. Trying to figure out ways to increase ICU capacity. And while they do have additional rooms that could be converted to ICU. We are facing a crisis in staffing and that's not just here in Fresno, but across the entire state. It is generally required that you have at least one registered nurse for two patients. And on a one-to-one ratio for those that are acutely sick. And what is happening is that there's a lot of, of our healthcare workers that are out as a result. And so what we need is really. The help to get additional healthcare workers in our valley to staff up and increase those ICU beds. And so I know that CRMC is trying to work hard to make that happen. There is some good news, I think. Along the way that we are going to be getting some relief, but we can't. Just rely on that. We also need to do our part as Councilmember Chavez mentioned. We're in this together and it is imperative. That not just our council, but that our leaders in law enforcement, that our leaders at the county, that we are. Saying the same message and making sure that people are doing their part. If we all. Do our part, our small businesses can get back to some level of normalcy where they're not being impacted as they're being impacted today. Because we are at no capacity in our local hospitals. We also want to make sure that those that do get acutely sick get the necessary care. That they deserve. And so, and we want to make sure that our workforce isn't fatigued so that when you arrive to the hospital. If unfortunately you need that type of care that you receive, the care that would be appropriate for you to get better. So with that, you know, urge not only the governor for additional support. But also urge all the residents of the city of Fresno to do their part in making a difference in this surge. And hopefully helping flatten that curb so that our hospitals don't continue to be overwhelmed.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Carbasi, can you allow me to go to the public first and then come back to you, to the rest of the council?
If I can comment because there may be a change, that way we can have comment from the public. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
But you know what? Let's hear, you're right. Let's hear from the public. Let's get their feedback first. You're right. Let's go ahead and go to the public.
Let me go to the public. I'll go start out with Brandy. Brandy?
Hi, thank you. I just want to thank you guys again for being mindful of the strain that's being put on our healthcare workers. And I appreciate what you said, that it was pointed out by Esmeralda that we're not just lacking space because people have said, why can't we expand? And go back into conventions there, but that we lack enough healthcare workers and that there's those who are out and. That there was lack of it and that we need, thank you so much for the time and the action. And thank you for taking the extra days to determine what is reasonable and what needs to happen with, in our community as far as this action in this past week. I'm hearing from so many people who have, are being affected by this, including someone who is. Someone I know who, whose friends, loved one was churned away. Because of, because of having cancer as well. And also hearing from friends who have, whose, whose loved ones have had a long process. Of just getting to a bed. We are, you know, we, as I mentioned the other day, we are. You know, there are consequences to our actions and we're seeing the consequences of our actions of the community for not being careful enough. And I'm sorry that the leadership is being blamed for what you're doing to keep safe. And that, that there are so many of us who understand that we need to, none of you like to do any, have to do restrictions. None of us, and we, but we understand that this is to save lives. And I want to thank you for the previous action to save. To make sure that, ensure that our CARES Act money stays with us so we can continue helping our community. And for seeking the state to be able to do what we can to be, to support our community and. Recognize that we do need to do our part as a community as well with this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Lisa Flores.
Sorry, I had to put my dog down because she enjoys your meetings, guys. Yeah, I know. First off, I want to remind you guys to get the word out that finally the phone app is up and running. The exposure notifications on both iPhones and Androids is up and running, which will tell you if you're within. A vicinity of somebody who's been IDed as COVID and such. So I would encourage you guys to get the word out in the community. Because that will help. And I'm kind of wondering, why is the number fifty? You know, me being this little high-risk heart patient and being home for nine months and minding my Ps and Qs and. You know, being very cognitive of how this pandemic is basically history repeating itself from the nineteen eighteen pandemic. I'm just wondering where the number fifty comes up. And as far as. Medical staffing, we could put, you know, sell in arena full of beds, but what it really breaks down to is you have fifty states. In crisis and just a finite member of medical staff. And it's just really sad that, you know, for the majority of you, you have been on point. On message about community safety. And I'm not going to talk about the one who hasn't. I'll deal with him later. So you know, what is the bigger game plan here? You know, what happens if we can't find the staff? You know, do we all go out for waffles? You know, what's the deal? But I really would like to see the number dropped because fifty is a large group.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, council, come back to the council. Member Carbasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues in the public. It really does help to hear your perspective. I want to ask the city attorney a question if he can. Come up on the screen. So if you look at the language. Point number two says the city reserves the right to pursue enforcement against those in violation of state and local emergency orders. Including mass gatherings and illegal concerts events if COVID nineteen numbers in the city intensify. Doesn't the city reserve that right? Is that, that seems a little bit superfluous to me. Doesn't the city reserve the right to, through code enforcement already and, and incur penalties on folks?
Yes, right now, state orders are incorporated into the city emergency order. And then there may be other potential violations such as noise that could be pursued or this could reflect that. Additional ordinances might be approved.
Okay. Thank you, city attorney. See, the thing is, I, I think it would be really, really good, especially when it comes to the discussion of ICU bed capacity and the need for resources. There's no question about that. That's a no-brainer. Having a unified vote makes a big difference rather than splitting this, adding language. That, in my opinion, superfluous, but also it's divisive because it was released last week. We've had a lot of feedback from the public and regardless of how we may feel, there are a lot of folks out there that are offended. Because they feel like it's an attack on small business or attack on their livelihoods. That may not have been the intent, but that's the reality of how it's viewed. And we have to be sensitive to that. You know, I really do want to support this item. I'm trying to find a way to support it. You know, we don't want to create a situation where we put our frontline healthcare workers and our nurses in a tough spot. Where they're having to pick and choose who gets a ventilator, who gets a bed. And I'm extremely worried about that. But at the same time, for backyard concerts, I believe we already have the necessary tools and noise ordinances. And a statewide curfew where code can already justify enforcing that. I know it's a really scary time. I've got an elderly parent at home. I'm paranoid for him. I don't want him to be at risk. But we can't lose our common sense because we're afraid. We have to understand that when this is over and we're going to get through this. If we're, if we're all careful, we're going to still have to have a community. And dividing that community is dangerous. So we've got to be really careful how we tread along this process. I think that. This may seem, you know, simple, but we need common sense and common decency at this time. I see the parties. I see them in my district. It upsets me. I think it's extremely selfish to have a party right now. That's a choice you make. I disagree with it. I think it's wrong. But what would be better is to have neighbors speak up and the community to speak up and say, hey, this has to stop. And to me, it's a public shame if you do that kind of a thing because it shows selfishness. But to divide. And have this language in here and kind of whittle down this whole message about ICU bed capacity, I think is where it kind of loses me. And of course. Having a fine at Christmas time, when people are losing their jobs, it's not really, really the right kind of, of, of message. I think we're going to, we're going to lose a lot of the intent by how divisive this point is. So I think it creates, it's not really a solution because it creates another problem. And it can create an economic problem for folks. We don't know how this is going to be distributed. So I, I respect where my colleagues stand. I'd like to support this. So what I'm going to do is make a motion to separate point two. So that we can vote on that separate point and then we can vote on the ICU portion.
So council, before we do that.
I will vote against the, I, I, I'm going to be frank with you. I'm going to vote against the, the other part.
Before we go there, let me allow me, allow me to acknowledge Councilmember Sparza before we start taking motions for amendments.
But I did take, I make a motion, Mr. President. I apologize. Point of order. I made a motion though.
And I do second it.
Okay.
There was already an initial motion, right?
There's a motion to approve and second it. So they're asking for a motion, a motion to separate.
Oh, that would be a procedural motion.
We allow, at least allow Councilmember Sparza.
Of course, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, ultimately I'm supportive of this measure as, as is written currently. I, I would say I don't think there's anything too new in this language. As Councilmember Carbasi alluded to. I mean, the city has always reserved the right to enforce, but I, I think it's also exercised a lot of discretion in that matter. Additionally, we can ask all we want of the state, but when we have our, our county leaders, the sheriff and our own police chief. Consistently undermining public health orders and recommendations. I mean, I, I really wouldn't expect much, much help that we're asking for. And in fact, I mean, it is because of the lack of leadership and the inconsistency that we've seen at the state level. And really just the, the astounding lack of action by, by the county that these decisions and these resolutions are, are falling on us. As sort of a, a last resort. I think again, we have to meet the moment and step up and stop watering down our legislation. I, I think all of us, I mean, the members of this council need to stop paying lip service to the healthcare workers. And the essential workers who are dying on the front lines of the crisis. While also trying to get watering down legislation. I, I voted against the removal of the item on Tuesday night because I thought. We at the very least needed to have the discussion. You know, our healthcare system really isn't heading towards a tipping point. It's, it's pretty much already there. And I, I, I'm, you know, I'm not sure what the distinction is there. But we need to do more than talk the talk. We need to walk the walk. And I think this resolution as written is probably the very least. Very minimum we could do. In fact, again, we should be doing more. We get a sort of a last backstop for our local community here.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. President, there was a reference to my comments if I can comment. Councilmembers Sparza, I do appreciate what you're saying. I, I mean it. I'm not just saying that. It, it does, you know, it falls heavily on me. The comment about lip service to frontline healthcare workers. The danger in America today, the danger with the pandemic is. There's a craziness out there that's happening where it's either or. And I've said this before. You can be compassionate, but also understand there are other perspectives. You and I may share a different perspective on. Who we're worried about in the pandemic. I think we're all worried about healthcare workers. We're worried about the public. I tend to be worried about the livelihoods of people, the kids that are out of school. And the impact it's going to have. Once COVID is over, we're going to have years. There are people that lost their jobs. They don't have food security. They're going to get health problems from this. There is a very big picture. And I think we can have a seven oh on this vote. By saying we pleading to the governor, taking that leadership position. But because of the information that was released earlier this week, it's created more division in this community. You put this in there, it's not going to be a seven oh vote. It's going to offend people that took, that, that, that took it the way they took it. And that's not going to help our community. I'm trying to create unity. Moving forward. It doesn't have to be, you don't support this, you don't support healthcare workers. We, I support them when it comes to making sure we have the, the resources we need. And you're right, a lot of it's on us. In the end, it's the local leaders to kind of clean up the mess of the state and federal government. You're right. I'm hoping the new administration is going to make a big difference in that, on that front. We'll have the resources we need. But it's not either or.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. It's, it's not either or. I think that we can create unity on this. I think you kind of mentioned it. It's pretty superfluous. We already have the authority to make our code enforcement do this. And I think the intent was code enforcement and not PD. So why not have a seven oh vote?
So if you would allow me, Councilmembers, to just speak on this side and then I'll go to Councilmember Chavez who made the motion because there is a request amended. As a person who took the blunt of the criticism after it was reported that we're going to go into people's homes. During Christmas and Council Christmas, I can tell you that all the emails and Facebook messages. Mostly Facebook messages, only two emails, one phone call and multiple Facebook messages. The one phone call was from a thoughtful constituent who's vulnerable and was concerned about people walking into their property. The middle of the night to find them. The two emails were thoughtful. And they were also informing us that people are having big parties and that they were concerned. And that they didn't want to, you know, be reporting them, but that in, in, in any other time, they would be reported based on the noise nuisance. And police would show up. The police isn't showing up for noise nuisance at this time. All the Facebook messages were all racist. Period. They were simply racist. Those people don't move by decision-making. And it's because here's the reality. I happen to have multiple congregate work settings. We just shut down foster farms for an outbreak there. Eight people in Livingston died because foster farm couldn't shut down early enough. To, to sanitize. They shut it down earlier here. I have Amazon with thousands of workers under one building. We pass rules where they notify all the employees, not just the person next to you because it's a congregate work setting. I have community medical centers. Those folks don't have to, who are saying us mean and racist Facebook messages. Number one, don't live in my district. Number two, primarily don't live in our city. And number three, they're not the ones who have to look at the packed hospitals. We have no more ICU beds. We can't create them overnight. There is no more medical staff to staff a backup hospital at the convention center. This is a moment that we were all trying to avoid. It's, it's not, it's not that we're making things up. Unfortunately, in Fresno, the cameras haven't been allowed into the hospitals so people can see folks waiting in line. I mean, the resolution reads clearly, twelve people in the hallway waiting for a bed. ICU beds are gone. I'm, I, I'm losing sleep over the fact that if my son gets sick today, he's not going to the hospital. If my daughter who has severe asthma gets sick, she's not going to the hospital. I have to explain to a fourteen-year-old that she'll probably have to stay home and die there. There, there is no more what if. We are in the what if. And some of us were, you know, not as cautious. Some of us engaged in, in, in philosophical and theoretical debates. But it's here now. We, we are here at a point of no more capacity. And we all agreed that we're doing this to protect the capacity of the healthcare system. Healthcare system is in the brink of collapsing before our, our eyes. Not fake news, not made up, not over-exaggerated. It's here. So what, what I'm wrestling with is the resolution was written thoughtfully. It just states the facts. According to the health officials in the hospitals, there are no more ICU beds. There is no more medical staff to staff a backup hospital locally. You know, to those people who, who, who disagree, the people who are having, I, I have a church in my district having an indoor concert this weekend. Based on their constitutional right to do it. But that pastor doesn't have to be at the hospital turning away families. He's not the doctor or the nurse putting their life at risk when there's no more beds working twenty-hour shifts. I, I, I don't know how to take the politics and the personal feelings out of it, except to stick to the facts that we are here. And if we don't do something, if we don't send a message that's clear, I, you know, Chief Hall's. Intervention on this policy matter disturbed me for one reason. Chief Hall hasn't been to the hospitals. That's not his job, but he hasn't been inside those hospitals. He hasn't seen the fact that there's no ICU bed. So a, a, as, as much as we're trying to work through this and, and give one unified message. I am at my wit's end. We've tried multiple times to do the best that we can. And I try to, you know, look through the eyes of Councilmember. Let's be a statesman about this. Through the eyes of Mayor Brand, let's take the feelings out and do what's best for the city as a whole. Through my lived experience and Nelson's lived experience and Ismael does, home with COVID. People are dying. They're dying right now. And if we can't seem to get on the same page on a basic notion. That this emergency and this crisis is on the verge of collapsing our healthcare system and we need to do something. If, if, if you don't like fifty, if you want a hundred, if you want two hundred, then say so. We'll figure something out. But we got to send a message that it's not okay to have a concert when there is no more hospital beds. That's, and then I'll leave it up to the council.
Mr. President, regarding the, before, one second, Councilmember Ritterfeld, regarding the racist emails you got. That's, that's not okay. And I'm sorry you had to experience that. It, I don't, I don't know what more to say about that. It's just a very divisive time in the country. And that's unacceptable. I'm sorry you had to face that. My office did get fifty-two emails, ten voicemails. In addition to dozens of calls on my cell phone in the office line about this issue. So my reaction from my constituents was a little bit different, just to share that. You actually are correct. The first page of the bill, it's all factual information. No question about that. I fully support that. Now, we're doing this. I don't really know how this bill is going to deal with ICU capacity. I think it's, it's a good gesture to get the governor's attention. And I think we can do that more with a seven oh vote. But the, the comment is, you know, we shouldn't water down these bills. We also shouldn't water down the constitutional rights of people. When that information came out early without. When that information came out early without being fully vetted by the council. It became a fourth amendment right issue for a lot of people. We may not like it, but that's what happened. This is going to create severe division in our community. All I'm asking for is it's superfluous. We already have these right, the disability. Let's take it out and let's votes, I'm, I'm assuming seven oh on a vote and send a unified message to the governor. That we're really concerned about ICU capacity. We already know we reserve that right. And I think that, that those stories earlier this week sent a message to the public. But the other thing is, the last thing I want to add. I get it. We're all frustrated. It's, it's kind of a lot of things and realizing we have to get through this and be a unified society. That, that holds on to our constitutional rights. But I, I took a note to defend the constitution. I feel compelled to do that. And if we can show very specifically how this action leads to this, that's fine. I think everyone knows you can't have a concert. Everyone knows that and we'd have the support of that. But that's not what this says. Let's just stick to the, to the ICU portion and um, let's do this unified.
Uh, Council President, did member Chavez have an amendment? I, I thought he's indicated that.
I think he does. Want to speak, Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, no, I, I, I deliberately let the conversation go on. I think it's a good debate. This conversation that this body is having is what has been occurring throughout our country. Uh, I don't know at one point in our nation's history. Did we somehow manage to politicize a public health issue? With conversations about what works, what doesn't work. Um, these are the times when we're supposed to trust our medical providers. And you know, everybody that knows me knows I'm, I'm a common sense guy. I'm not a conspiracy theory. Um, I, I'm pretty savvy about navigating the politics and the theatrics and. Everything that's involved in that. And, and, and for me, it's not about that. Uh, this is a point in time where after this is over, I, I need to be able to look at myself in the mirror. And say that we did everything we possibly could to try to save lives. And the argument I heard, whether you were on either side of the aisle. Was that, hey, we started this approach to minimize and try to reduce overwhelming our healthcare system. And the data and the numbers are there for anybody to examine. Uh, and that's the beautiful part about math, that it's universal. It doesn't lie. Uh, one plus one is two. Uh, bed space right now is what it is. Uh, and we have to act. It's not a popular thing to do. And I, I said earlier that, you know, we all have constitutional rights. Everybody that, that, that knows me knows that. Whether it's the second amendment, whether it's like Councilmember Carvaz said, the fourth amendment. I absolutely respect and, and, and revere those. Uh, what I also respect and revere is personal responsibility. And, and the responsibility that goes along with that. Councilmember Carvaz is right. Everybody knows that they shouldn't be having concerts right, right now. But guess what? They're having concerts right now. And, and I understand the frustration of people. I'm sick and tired of this shit already, of, of this situation. Um, I don't like wearing masks. I don't like using hand sanitizer. I miss going to the bar and, and being with friends. But I'm also at least have some common sense to know that I, by reducing those actions. I'm actually contributing somehow to making sure that we're reducing the numbers of COVID in this area. That math that, that I referenced earlier about the ten percent, that comes directly from our local health providers that are seeing that. Uh, on the front lines and, and, and maybe I'm a little bit sensitive because I have family that works in those hospitals. And the fact that those nurses and doctors have to get to their home and decontaminate, decontaminate in their garage. Um, is very sobering for me. Because w- w- we, we oftentimes live in our bubble, right? If, if, if you're a council member, you're seeing things from a perspective. If you're a small business owner, you're seeing things from that perspective. If you operate a laundromat or a, you know, entertainment center or a movie theater. We all have our perspectives, but here's the, the, the one thing that I know that our city is capable of. And somehow along this pandemic, we lost that ability to really come together and at least try to build consensus. On minimizing the risk, the exposure and the COVID infection numbers. That right now is ravaging our city. I don't think anybody that you ask that simple question um out in the street. Under- doesn't understand that hospitals are overwhelmed right now. And based on the numbers that we're seeing, the simple math. W- w- we're, we're gonna have to deal with this. Now, this letter, this request that we're sending to the governor. Absolutely. Councilmember Sparza is right. Um, the Central Valley always gets left behind. Um, I, I don't expect uh that the governor is going to uh allot those uh resources. Just because everybody's stretched so thin, but we at least have to ask. Because if you don't ask, you don't get it. Now, here's. One of my biggest concerns, and this is really what keeps me up at night. Um, what are, what is the city of Fresno going to do next week? When all of the three hundred and seventy-five positive cases that we've been having on a daily basis averaging. Now ten percent of that has to go to the hospital and we don't have the facility to provide medical care. I spoke to that family that got turned away at one of our local hospitals. Where this individual is terminally ill. And the response you got was there's nothing we can really do for you. Um, and we've decided to triage our operations. And you can either go to a hospice facility or you can go home. Like that to me is the most basic dignity for a human being that is on its last phase of life. That's a very sobering number. And to me, it's not about politics. It's not about, you know, your, your, whether we're stripping your, your constitutional rights. There are people in all of our families that have fought and died for those constitutional rights. We should never give those up. But we also should participate in personal responsibility and sacrificing a little bit just to try to get through this. And Councilmember Carvaz is right. We're gonna get through this. There is light at the end of the tunnel. But what we're trying to do today and the goal today is to just let folks know, please be responsible. The vast majority of our residents are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Many of us are doing what we're supposed to be doing. We hate it. It's annoying and, 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 and very frustrating. But that's the sacrifice part. That's what's really made our country great. Where in these times of need, these times of challenges, we can come together, sacrifice a little bit. Um, it's the same argument that we've had when, you know, I get a speeding ticket. I know I went a little too fast. I probably shouldn't have done that. I don't feel like my constitutional rights are violated to speed. I hate wearing the seatbelt. Everybody that knows me knows that my car has to remind me ten times to put my seatbelt on. But I do it. I do it because it's, it's, it's what's going to keep us safe. And, and, and so in that spirit, I, I understand what's going on right now. I know we represent very.
Member Chavez, I hate to interrupt you, but is this an amendment?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting to that, Vice President.
Okay, well.
So, so we have this conversation that has been uh ongoing for a while. Um, I'm okay splitting those two up. I'm okay uh agreeing to that, to that amendment. If, if that's a comfort level for my colleagues, I'm very respectful of the constituents you represent and, and your districts. Um, if that gives, provides a comfort level, absolutely.
Councilman Bretafeld?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember Chavez, because I can support it. If we split it up. Everything in there I agree with in terms of getting assistance for our frontline workers, helping with the ICU. Actually, um, fully supportive. My hesitation is the same as Councilman Carvaz. I don't like. The whole en- enforcement uh aspect to it. I think a- as we've talked about, people have had tremendous fatigue over this now. It was uh fourteen days to. Uh, stop the curve has turned into the nine, nine month nightmare. And we've gone from roadmaps to dimmer switches to color-coded. Uh, systems to goalposts that move every day to emergency breaks. Uh, to uh elected officials who put mandates that they never follow. And people have a lost faith in any uh people espousing more lockdowns. Lockdowns, frankly, they just don't work. I mean, we've had lockdowns and here we are nine months later and uh we have it, uh, COVID spiking because it is a virus and it is a very contagious one. And it spreads. And uh, the fact is, we have fined people over eighty thousand dollars in the city of Fresno. Uh, we've supported businesses being shut down and people have lost their businesses, never to return. Uh, livelihoods have been negatively impacted. Lives have been negatively impacted. We have schools. Uh, that are completely locked down, have been in extended lockdowns. That makes absolutely no sense from science. We even have Dr. Fauci uh who has said kids need to be in school. We have kids committing suicide on. A virtual uh learning uh classes of which they're never learning. We know that kids zero to nineteen age, according to the CDC, recover ninety-nine point nine nine seven percent of the time from, from COVID and yet they're not in school. And so a lot of the policies that have been imposed make no sense. Uh, we are dealing with a virus. Uh, it's a serious virus. We have a council member, Soria, who's been diligent of, uh, obviously about wearing masks, handing out masks. Um, and has gotten COVID, um, because it is highly contagious. And so I share the feelings. I sh- I understand the passion from, from my colleagues on this. Uh, we've differed on the procedure and how to, how to deal with it. I, I haven't believed in finding businesses. I believe businesses can follow the same CDC guidelines that a Walmart or a Lowe's or a Home Depot can follow. Uh, and run their businesses just as safely as any other business. And yet, I think some of the quote cure that we've imposed has been worse than the disease. So if we can separate it, I'm fully supportive of it. Uh, I like the idea of asking uh the governor who is. Uh, historically, most governors have, have ignored the Central Valley uh to assist us. I just am not going to support anymore, not that I have, enforcement lockdowns. I think some of these have been unconstitutional. We've seen, they have been across the country. Uh, some of them, I have said, I think have been fairly draconian measures. Uh, and we've hurt people uh through these measures. And uh, it's not anything I'm going to support. So if we can extricate that second uh number two. Uh, I'm happy to support this. And I think it, it would be good if we had a seven oh vote uh to support it and, and get away from. Uh, the, the lockdowns and the enforcement. Acts, aspects, because it is about personal responsibility and people do have information and they have to make choices. Uh, to keep themselves safe. That's, that's what this is about. We live in America. It's a freedom. We live in freedom. And the constitution doesn't get suspended because there's a virus. If there's nowhere in the constitution, it says that. So I appreciate the Councilman.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely agree. Um, Councilmember Bretafeld and I, and I'm agreeable to that. But since we're out here having a very honest conversation, uh, I guess my question for yourself and for Councilmember Carvaz is. What, what should the city do for those folks that have backyard concerts with, you know, fifty, a hundred people in the back? Should, should there be any penalty for them within that approach that, that you're taking?
Can I?
So, I, I want to hear the answer.
Yeah, so. Can, can I also, I ask you one question specifically to remember Chavez's point. What should the city do when Pastor Franklin is having an indoor concert next weekend? Which is not allowed or recommended by CDC.
So. That was a conversation the council was having. And when that information was prematurely released, that's what messed everything up. It's really easy to attack Chief Hall. I, I know we disagree on this, Council President. But what, when he had no idea that the intent was not to use police. When we've had a record number of shootings. Look, he sees tragedy all the time. From when he first came on and saw last year's mass shootings. To seeing the record number of shootings we have in this community and dealing with that crisis in the midst of everything. So I don't agree with that statement, but the council was moving in that direction. And that all changed because of a decision to release information. So I'm not prepared to discuss that because now we have a new debate. Whether or not we agree with the, the perception people have. People feel and they rightfully feel their constitutional rights are being taken away. Instead of talking about public health, we're moving in that direction.
I, I, I. Uh, Council President, I've been very patient.
Yes.
You asked a question. You asked a question, Mr. Uh, Council President. Uh, what should be done about Pastor Franklin or anyone else? Uh, my answer is nothing. Uh, people ha- have uh masks. They understand about the protection. Whether or not, I mean, some people disagree. There's research that said N ninety-five is the only one that, only mask that really protects. Having said that, people have choices and responsibility on what, what they do. And if they feel that going to a concert, they will be safe, they ought to be free to do it. That's the way I feel about it.
Councilmember. Well, to add to that then, I feel a little bit differently. You know what would make a difference, guys? Is a bill where we come together and demand the county give us the freaking data. So when I go to people and say, I have to shut you down, hey, guys, this is how I'm doing it. It's like we're steering a ship, but we have no map or sexton. How can we do that? We need the data. Let's do that.
Yeah, Councilmember Bretafeld's uh honesty here. And this is the, this is the last thing that, that I think, because I think we can, we're, we're at a time and space where we can. Wrap this up. Um, that's what the language was intended to do um for Councilmember Carvaz and Bretafeld. If you look at it, there, there's no specific on what that looks like. Uh, all it does is it essentially tees up a conversation for later. Uh, when we have the, the, the need and the crisis, uh, a little bit more pressing than it is now. Um, there's nothing in this that outlines the specific numbers or what the penalty will be. It's essentially just ensuring that as an option for later. And I understand Councilmember Bretafeld's point. He, he's just a no. Uh, regardless, and I, and I respect that. Um, w- w- you know, with his, with, on his side. So I, I, I think we've all said what we needed to say. I think we're ready to vote, Council President.
Councilmember, let me uh, uh, allow uh to get some clarity. So first of all, I want to say as much as I disagree with my colleague Bretafeld, I respect the fact that. He's very clear about where he stands, so.
Honest.
Appreciate that. Um, secondly, um, the, the motion is to separate the two items. So we're going to take two votes. One vote on um, item one and a second vote on item two, just so that we're clear. So, uh.
Yes, Council President, you know, being a statesman has its limits.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I mean, I've heard the same dialogue over and over and I'm getting frustrated.
I understand.
So I, I've been trying to, to uh get involved here. That, actually, this is not that complicated. Uh, and here's why. Number one, the re- the resolution is to help get support for our community. To contact the governor. To help us fight this pandemic in a plea to the governor by way of resolution. But what has happened is. Due to some uh hodgepodge of ideas that the council exchanged uh in last week. Uh, all of a sudden, uh, which there was no consensus at all on numbers or dialogue or otherwise. It was just. Uh, comments. That became uh, uh, released, however, I, I'm not sure. I wasn't involved with that. Uh, but what's, what has happened is now that release has become a flashpoint. And what happens when you have a flashpoint? You lose sight of the message. You lose sight of the purpose. You lose sight of what we're trying to do here and accomplish. So now we have this flashpoint that we have to calm down. So again, as a result of that, which is to no fault of any of us, to my knowledge or information. Uh, now the result is we have to get back to the message and the message is more state assistance from the governor to our community to fight COVID. We have to return to that message. And uh, I support the uh amendment to strike the second paragraph. And I hope everyone can exercise and be aware of and, and implement common sense. It's an individual decision, but please, everyone, there's, there's no doubt about what's going on. So just use common sense. And let us use common sense by voting for the message to the governor. And hope uh that he listens and backs up what he says with assistance to the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Councilor, uh, Vice President, thank you. We're going to go to the mayor uh before I clarify what the actual amendment is. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Yeah, we have this enormous responsibility and I said back in, literally the only decision I've made. That it is a life and death decision. So I think anybody disagrees on the consequences, on the math that uh, Councilmember Chavez talked about. We're getting to a desperation point. The real question is what's, what can we do to make it better? What can we do to stem the tide? And I'm looking across the nation, all these debates are going. I don't think anybody has the answer. I don't believe having a heavy hand in the club is going to solve the problem. I think it's going to exacerbate the problem. And what Paul said. We come across on a seven oh vote is that, that means a lot to me. We already have the, the authority through code enforcement to do the enforcement. You don't even have to put the face in. You don't have to put fifty. I think we all agreed on egregious violations, which we could all do that. And in fact, our city attorney said a couple of days ago. He said fifty or more, you're going to get a pair of binoculars out there and start counting people before you go in. It's impossible to do. We need to send a message of unity. And I think the more we can persuade people, it ultimately is going to come down to voluntary compliance. And I think a lot of businesses have been shattered. Their lives have been changed without the justification that's. And I think a lot of businesses have been shattered, their lives have been changed without the justification that's necessary. We don't want to exacerbate that. If, remember Chavez, if you could just leave that second part out, have a seven oh vote, because we all well, we already have the authority already to do it. And I agree that in egregious conditions, it should be used. And you mentioned fifty or more, that's a situation. But the message we send out today will make it, will make a huge difference to our community in the start of sending a message. Persuade people. Be responsible for what you're doing. You're affecting everybody. That's the best way, in my opinion, we can deal with this pandemic. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor.
I call for the question.
Um, Council Vice President, allow me. I know it's your last meeting and you're tired, so are the rest of us.
Well, I'm not tired. I just, we've beat this to death in this vote and then we'll decide.
There is a motion to separate the two items, um, to separate item one and two. So. That's a motion to amend. Um, is a maker of the motion agreeable to separate both items?
Yes.
All right, as a second, I'm agreeable to uh separate both items, so we'll take a. Uh, consider a motion to approve item one. Is there a motion to approve item one?
So moved. If that's okay with, if that's okay with Luis though, because it's his item.
It's fine. Is there a second?
I'll second it, have Luis go for it first.
Hold on. There's a a motion by Member Carvazi, second by Council Vice President Capriolio. Uh, roll call, please.
It's a wait, wait, let's, this is to approve just one?
Yes, item one.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carvazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria? Council Vic- uh, Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. All right. Is there a motion to approve item two?
Motion.
Second, second, second motion by Chavez, second by Sparza. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
No.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carvazi?
No.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
No.
President Arias?
Yes.
Score three.
Okay, council, that is the final item for public discussion. We will now retrieve. Uh, take a ten minute break and go into closed session for. We can go into closed session immediately. We only have one item in closed session. And that is a conference with real property negotiator on APN number four four six. Zero two one zero. So I'll see you in closed session in a couple of minutes. It's the same leak in your outlook for the morning.
And no announcement afterwards.
And we don't need to give announcements uh after the me- the closed session.
Okay.